Will the meeting please come to order? Becca, will you please call the roll?
Gandy.
Here.
Hamm.
Here.
Flornoy.
Here.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Counsel, are there any changes to the agenda tonight? If none, we will move on. The first order of business tonight is to swear in two new police officers, so we're excited to do that always. So I'm going to come out to the middle. See how talented I am to hold a mic and this at the same time. So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, and then repeat your name.
Aye, Austin Oldman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Do the best of my ability.
Do the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of police officer.
Discharge all the duties of the police officer.
In the city of Fairfield.
In the city of Fairfield.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Thank you. Congratulations and welcome. Mr. Drew Steever? Please raise your right hand. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Drew Steever.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitutions of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitutions of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of police officer.
Discharge all of the duties of police officer.
In the city of Fairfield.
In the city of Fairfield.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Thank you. And thanks for the families for coming to see them get sworn in. Okay, next we have the consent agenda, which includes approval of the minutes of the December 16th, 2019 council meeting, approval of minutes of the January 2nd, 2020 special council meeting, approval of December 27th, 2019 payroll in the amount of $120,465.69, approval of January 10th, 2020 payroll, $131,240.5, approval of USDA Step 1 debt in the amount of $12,975, approval of CoBank interim financing debt in the amount of $43,520.40, approval of the November finance report, a resolution authorizing fund transfers, resolution of employment in the Park and Recreation Department, resolution of employment in the Street Department, resolution of promotion in the wastewater department, approval of liquor license for University Amoco Play and Dollar General Store number 7142, and approval of total claims in the amount of $621,846.6. We have two claims that are over $75,000. DeLong Construction, $99,969.42, and PKG Contracting Incorporated for $119,890. So DeLong was for water made on stone, and the other is for the wastewater treatment plant.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Flornoy and seconded by Gandy. Any discussion? Becca, go ahead and call the roll for that.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes, but I need to abstain for the minutes for December 16th and January 2nd.
Okay. And Hallie?
Yes.
Great. Next, we have public appearances. So just to let you know, the kind of the ground rules are you have no more than five minutes, and if you can keep it to three, the council appreciates that. Please state your name and where you live so that council members know which ward that you belong in and who represents you. And first off is Paula Armstrong with the Beautification Commission Annual Report.
So I'm Paula Armstrong. I live at 1107 East Broadway. I'm co-chair of the Fairfield Beautification Commission. We are a dedicated and enthusiastic group of between seven and 10 volunteers whose mission is to keep Fairfield beautiful and maintain public places and organize other volunteers to get involved in projects that we have. So the first side of this handout, these are just some of the projects that we did this year around Central Park, Heritage Court, different areas of the city. I'll let you just browse that on your own. I think what I'm most proud of is the Central Park volunteers that have organized to clean up and maintain the garden nodes all over Central Park, and the upgrade of Heritage Court that a volunteer did, many hours of redesigning and landscaping and planting. So those two things. But we also have other projects during the year. We had volunteers maintaining the library grounds, volunteers painting Central Park gazebo, volunteers cleaning up Heritage Court. So that's the kind of thing that we try to get people involved in. And of course, we also do the Rose Awards. Some of you have probably gotten a Rose Award some point. On the other side of the handout is our budget, and we're about halfway through our budget year. So we spend a lot in May and before the budget closes in June. So we have still a lot to spend, but that's always the way that we go because we do a lot of planting in the spring and then use up the budget from the following, you know, from the summer before that way. So these are just the different categories, what we budgeted for in each category, what we spent, and then what we still have to spend before the next budget year ends, before this budget year ends. So, and then our proposed budget for next year. So that probably is under three minutes. Any questions or comments? We also could use a couple more volunteers if you know of anyone. Right now, we're at seven. We can go up to 10. So if you have anyone who is passionate about keeping Fairfield beautiful, please encourage them to join our commission.
Great. Thank you.
I think I have some in my pocket.
Do we need to approve this annual? Okay. So if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve this annual report.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Thanks, Paula. Next, we have Paul Glosson.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you very much for entertaining my interest in approving something that I think needs slight improvement in the council, so I want to make this as positive as possible. I would love to read the city's, read back to you, the city's mission statement, but it might take a minute. There's a short version. So unless you, so perhaps I'll just bring two key words forward. The first one is the first power word in the mission statement, which is efficient, efficiency. And then there's another power word under core values, which is honesty. So I'm relating this to two invoices I've received from the city. One relative to mowing a small strip of city property, which is immediately next to one of my properties in Fairfield. It's on an alley, and it's a strip of grass about this wide and about 40 feet long. Now normally, I have a person who charges me $10 per time to do that. In this case, the city has invoiced me in one instance $75 for mowing that, and in another instance, $190 for the same strip. The invoices are dated in 2019. So that's a total of $265 for what I normally pay $20 for. The factor of increase is about 13 times what I normally pay. Now, I understand, I would understand if I were receiving a slap on the wrist for not doing it. This is in the new Chicago area of, let's say, a four times factor. But I feel that a 13 times factor is unfair, and I'd like to ask the city to reduce the amount to maybe a four times factor. But when I look at the mission statement, it says efficiency. So I'm assuming the city is not 1/13th as efficient as the guy who does it for me. So I don't think this is based on efficiency. And then I looked at the word honesty, and if I were honest about this, I think this is a nonjudicial fine. And if the city is going to be honest about how, in its mission statement, it should also add to all the wonderful positive words here that from time to time, it essentially fines its citizens for doing something that the city doesn't approve of. Now, from what it costs me, $20 for this $265 service, I think it's an excessive expansion of charges. I would understand if it were, say, $80 for what I normally charged, I normally charged $20 for. And so I think the city either ought to be efficient, because that's not efficient, or it ought to add to the mission statement, in all honesty, that it sometimes punishes citizens by way of fines. And so I'm asking the city to reduce this to something more reasonable rather than having a sort of nonjudicial fine. I think that's it. Please, thank you. Any questions? Yep.
So I'm a little confused.
Yep.
A piece of property you described, you said was a piece of city property?
Yes, it's the, so my, the wall of my building at 411 North Fourth Street is immediately adjacent to a city alley, which is 16 feet wide.
So why would we bill you the mail to our property?
I don't know, but I assume that the city likes to make its citizens somewhat responsible for the city property that's adjacent.
It's called the right of way.
Is this the right of way?
Everyone else they care for that.
This is the right of way for your property?
No, it's a right of way for anybody.
Oh, adjacent to your property?
Adjacent to my property. It's a city, it's a city alley. It's not a very well-known city alley because it doesn't go anywhere. It ends up at where the Catholic Church, the old Catholic Church property finishes. But it is on city property because the lot line, my building comes right up to the lot
And Scott, can you come up? These two invoices, one was bigger than the other, so did we increase fees or was that for more than one time?
It was an increased fee. And last spring, we approved a change in all city fees to include the mowing fee from, it was $75, to the 190.
And the area in question is the area that's right next to his building, which is probably a two swipe area. It's not over, it's on the side of the alley closest to his building, which he is responsible
Any comments, counsel? Do you want to, anybody want to take that to committee and discuss it further?
Can I ask what the two dates are on the invoices?
One is 11-1-2019, and in fact, they're both 11-1-2019, although maybe I'm not seeing something.
The one mowing was in August 8th, which would have incurred the $190, which was after you passed the new ordinance, and the other one was on July 9th. And that would have actually been done before, and that's when it got billed, after July 1st, but the work was done before you passed the ordinance.
Okay. And Paul, were there any extenuating circumstances that your, you didn't do it, or your gentleman that you normally do, didn't do it?
There was, on an emotional level, there was an extenuating circumstance in that I was away from, I was dealing with my mother passing away in April. And so I went to the UK in May to deal with these things, and so that you could call that extenuating, I suppose. I wasn't able to put my full attention on the buildings I own in Fairfield.
Okay, thank you. Any thoughts, counsel? You want to take it back to committee or?
Well, we just had two of these in the last couple of months, and we didn't allow an appeal. I mean, he can always appeal, I guess, but we didn't allow any leeway on those bills. So I would feel uncomfortable doing it now.
Okay.
Yeah, in this situation, it's a small area, but the fee is just for the mowing, regardless of the size. So you're getting $190 for somebody who may have an entire empty lot. You'd also get $190. That's the imperfect nature of the way we do this. It's not based on time, it's just a, it's just a fee. The idea is that it hurts a little, you won't do it again, that you'll maintain your properties as responsible landowner. So I would recommend getting somebody to maintain them when you're out of the country, especially in this growing season, so this just doesn't happen again.
It's all very well saying that, but it's the proportion, it's the proportionality of it, and it's the reputation of the city. When I talk to my friends and colleagues about this, and they look at it and say, "Well, perhaps it could be a little bit more proportional." Perhaps when Scott does it, or one of his associates works on it, they could roughly estimate the square footage and say, "Oh, the time that it takes," because it's maybe a 15-minute job. So it seems out of proportion to me.
Just, that's a difficult ordinance to write, because that's so subjective. So you're saying they're going to bill at a certain rate for 15 minutes.
Yep.
It's a lot easier to have a set rate that's a fee for noncompliance.
It's certainly easier, but you might want to remember that there's a number of us in what we call the new Chicago area who, with our own money, are improving that area slowly. And we're improving it from an area that's rather grassy and weedy and having old buildings to a place that has improved buildings. And the city is not putting any money into that, whether, you know, they're not making any judgments about that. So we're trying, but that means that we need, you know, capital and so on. And this comes as, it's definitely as a financial punishment, much bigger than I think it should be. So that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Oh, go ahead, Becca.
So since we had three of these complaints this year, maybe we should have the Ways and Means look at the pricing structure of that before next fiscal year, so we can come back to counsel and address that question maybe.
Okay. Great. So thank you, Paul. They will relook at that. Appreciate your comments.
But you still want me to pay the $290 for whatever it is?
I think at this time, yes, but they will review the.
Well, I was suggesting we review the ordinance to begin, if we change the structure, next July, next fiscal year.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Next, we have Kathy Matarra.
I'm actually just going to read mostly because I want to get done on time, and I have a few things to say here.
Kathy, what's your address?
Oh, 606 North Third.
Thank you.
So thank you all for the opportunity to share some information and invitations with you today regarding both the current and upcoming rollout of 5G by U.S. Cellular. I'm Kathy Matarra. Some of you may know me from my work to establish safe, non-radiating utility meters for Fairfield. I am now working with a new organization called Safe Technologies Fairfield. I'm working with a team of Fairfield citizens whose objective is to keep radiation in Fairfield at safe levels, and we're currently working with the new 5G issue. The goal of Safe Technologies Fairfield are twofold, the goals. One is education. To that end, we have arranged for Dr. Timothy Sheckley to come here from Boulder, Colorado to speak at Mayor Boyer's First Community Forum this Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00 at the Sondheim. He is a world-renowned expert who will provide us with facts, possible solutions, and there will be an opportunity for questions and answers. Some high points of his 20-page resume include, his degrees are technological and engineering from the College of Engineering and Applied Science in Boulder. He is a 5G expert and is a keynote speaker at the 5G summits, and there have been quite a few of them. He's an engineer and has developed gateways, control system software, smart appliances, Internet of Things devices, and consumer electronics for energy management and the integration of solar generation and storage in homes and small buildings. I could go on for a very long time, but I won't take the time. We want the community to have the ability to make decisions based on facts. As we learned from the hearings with the Utility Board regarding the smart meter rollout, after filing multiple motions to compel, many previously hidden facts that had been concealed from the public were revealed, those regarding privacy invasion, number of signals that were actually happening, and financial information. It was only through legal force that we got the whole story. We prefer to know exactly what we're exposing ourselves to before we agree to be the first recipients of 5G, which to date has not undergone any safety studies on humans, animals, or insects. The second goal of Safe Technologies Fairfield is the precautionary principle. I'm sure you've all heard of it, but it states, "When an activity raises possible threats of harm to human health or the environment, precautionary measures should be taken, even if some cause-and-effect relationships have not been fully established scientifically." In this case, however, there are over 1,600 studies indicating that RF radiation can damage heart, brain, nerve, and blood cells with too much exposure. Scientists, experts, and citizens worldwide have voiced their opinions that the 5G technology is not safe. One of my team members will be handing out little notebooks for you that have some articles in them from Scientific American, Lancet, and Power Watch that discuss the very safe, various safety issues, in case you want to look at them at your leisure. So the last points are, what is 5G and what is its current status in Fairfield? 5G is the fifth generation of wireless technology, and like the earlier generations, gives off radio frequency radiation, only stronger. It is a chosen frequency in the gigahertz range, which is placed as an overlay and rides on top of the already existing 4G frequencies, which are broadcasting currently from our three Fairfield cell towers. The previous generations of 2, 3, and 4G were in the 600 to 850 megahertz frequencies. 1 gigahertz is equal to 1,000 megahertz. 5G is in the gigahertz frequencies and can run as high as 60 gigahertz, which is the same as 6,000 megahertz. So you can see it has much greater strength.
Kathy?
Yes.
Sorry, you've hit your five minutes, is there something? Can you wrap that up?
Oh, yeah. I'm very close to the end. It's up to you. Can I finish?
Yeah.
It's up to you. Okay. Let's see. So the 90 gigahertz range is used for crowd control and as a weapon, just to, it's a little close for comfort for most people. U.S. Cellular has purchased 24 and 28 gigahertz frequencies for the use in Iowa and Wisconsin for approximately 250 million, and is rolling this out to us first with no safety studies and without public input or agreement. So we'll be one of the first to get this. The CEO of U.S. Cellular has explained the preliminary upgrade that we have already received in Fairfield recently, to some extent to respond to Mayor Boyer's letter. Our Fairfield towers have been lowered from 700 megahertz to 600 megahertz, with a low frequency riding on top of it, which is a gigahertz frequency. He did not define the added frequency, other than to imply that it's a low, lower than a microwave frequency, but all of these frequencies are microwaves. So we assume he means less than a microwave oven, which functions at 2.45 gigahertz. I'm going to skip down here. We have been clearly told that the next upgrade to 24 or 28 gigahertz frequency has not yet occurred, but will occur in the first quarter of 2020. So I would like to close by inviting you to be sure to attend Dr. Sheckley's talk at the Sondheim. I hope you can make it. And also to invite you to a special brunch with Dr. Sheckley, where you will have, you will have access to him, private audience, and can ask him questions personally. And I will be sending out invitation and location for that. I also wanted to invite those of you who are interested to come with me while I measure the cell phone towers. I have the equipment that measures up to 2.5 gigahertz, if you would like to see it firsthand. It's very interesting to see it and how far it goes, and we can walk back and show you the whole thing. Anyway, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Does anyone have any specific questions for Kathy? No. It's not a public hearing for that. These will be questions from counsel.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Kathy. Okay, next we'll go to resolutions, action items, and ordinances. We have an action item, the consideration of 2020 IRS mileage rate of 57 and 1/2 cents per mile.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those favor, same sign. Okay, that's passed by unanimous vote. Consideration of accepting CD interest quote. Aaron, can you give us detail on that?
You have a memo in front of you that I put together. We put out a request for a quote for CD rates to invest some of the city finances in. As you can see, Community First Credit Union was the highest CD quote. After discussing with Travis Squires, our financial advisor, with Piper Jaffray, he's recommending to put somewhere around $4 million into the annual CD. He said if we wanted to be a little more aggressive, we could go up higher, but after Rebecca and I had a conversation, we're going to be a little more conservative with that. So we'd like an approval to accept that quote and move those funds to Community First Credit Union.
I would move to approve.
The $4 million, is that undesignated?
It's part of the un, the balanced funds that we have. They're not in the budget, per se.
We don't need to liquidate it the next 12 months?
No.
What's the surrender fee on, if we had to?
That I don't know yet. I could get that for you, though.
Okay, there's been a motion on the floor to accept these rates moving to Community Credit Union?
Second.
Second by Hallie. Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, that's passed unanimously as well. Next, we have a resolution, consideration of tax abatement application for 210 South 15th Street. Are the McLarens here today, tonight? Nope? Any questions on that, counsel?
Well, I just was wondering, so these are valued at $18,000 improvements each, but it says in here that you have to improve the property value by 10%. Is that going to happen?
That will be up to the county assessor to determine that.
Do we have to prove it without?
Yeah, we kind of.
I mean, sometimes it's a lot bigger than this. I'm just thinking, does $18,000 new garage really going to improve the property value by 10%?
Yeah. It's the assessor's final determination whether or not they've done that or not.
All right. Do we think we're close?
I don't know.
I guess we never know when we approve these until after the fact, right? Because they won't get assessed until they. Because they won't get assessed until the improvement's been put into place.
Right.
So I move we approve it.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Flornoy, second by Anderson to approve the tax abatement. Is there any additional discussion?
I would think that maybe we would go back and look at that 10% rule again and maybe remove it, because we really want people to improve their homes, and we want the city to improve its beautification, so I think we should give a tax abatement for any significant improvement, not base it on requiring a 10% improvement in the total property value, because that could be pretty substantial, but something we can think about.
So base it on a minimum dollar amount?
Yeah, like a minimum dollar amount, but it might lead to a lot of applications, but we want people to improve their homes and their quality of life, so...
Are these time-intensive, Rebecca, for us?
Yes. Depending on when they've done their improvements, it needs to be over to the assessor by February 1st.
Okay, but we don't spend a lot of time internally processing this paperwork?
No.
Well, Economic Development Committee could take a look at that.
Great. All right. So it's been moved and seconded again to approve this tax abatement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, that's been approved unanimously. Okay, is Melanie here? I don't know. There she is. Next up, we're going to talk about the proposed street improvements and 2020 overlays. So we're going to have Melanie give us some detail, and then we'll open up the public hearing to see if there's any comment from the public.
All right, thank you. So the first project on the agenda tonight is for the 2020 overlays. This project is a 3-inch asphalt overlay of approximately seven blocks of existing seal coat streets. The streets include Hulk Avenue from 2nd to 3rd, 8th Street from Kirkwood to Gere, and Gere from 8th to 9th. And so this project consists of a 3-inch asphalt overlay. Then the city comes back in and puts down gravel shoulders, sometimes does some ditching along with that. This is the third or fourth of these types of projects that the city has done. We've been really happy with the outcome of it. Seal coat streets have to be redone every two to three years, and so this asphalt is giving us much longer life. Our oldest project out there is six years old, but we would expect upwards of 20 years, so much better bang for our buck as far as longevity of the surface. The estimate for the work is $131,500. The bids are due January 23rd at 11:00 a.m. We have the completion date set as June 15th, and there will be a two-year warranty on the work. Due to the nature of the work, there will likely only be one bidder, but we do have past bid tabs and can make sure that the single bid we get is in line with other projects. So unless there's any other questions, that's all I have.
Any questions, council? If not, then I'll open the public hearing. Are there any comments from the public? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Okay.
Can I ask one question?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Are we really only having to redo the end of one private drive out of all of this?
Yes, most of them are gravel drives.
Is that how? Okay.
With, if it's a paved surface, and this is really regardless of the type of project, if the existing drive is a paved surface, we put it back as a paved surface. If it's gravel, we put it back as gravel.
As gravel, okay.
You mean in the right of way?
Yes.
Yes.
Or whatever we tear up, we would put back.
Right.
But is it typical that we do the right of way, even if it's gravel going into the house? Because mine is.
Oh, only associated with a project. Only associated with a project.
Okay.
Okay, any other additional questions? If not, I entertain a motion to the proposed street improvements and 2020 overlays.
So moved?
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, that motion passed unanimously. Okay, Melanie, next thing. This has to do with the consideration of the proposed library chiller replacement.
Yes.
At the library.
Mm-hmm. So for the library chiller replacement, the estimated cost of this is $150,000. So state bidding laws require us to do a formal bid, which is why you're having the public hearing on it. The project's a little unique in that I'm working with Klingner and Associates to put together the bid package. They're doing the technical side of things, and I'm handling the bidding documents. So I'll try and explain the scope of work. But we, the project includes replacing the chiller. The existing chiller was more or less built into the library. It was put in before the floor was put on. So the new unit is not going to be able to be put back in the basement, but it will be put into that same enclosed-in area that's on the west side of the building. The new equipment can fit in that existing space. Then the old equipment will have to be deassembled in the basement and removed back, removed out of there. So the scope of work includes the new unit, removing the old unit, and then all necessary plumbing and electrical that's going to be needed in order to have that unit outside rather than inside. This project does not include replacing the controls. When this was originally brought to the Ways and Means Committee, that was part of the budget that was presented. However, with Klingner, as well as another contractor looking at it, they determined the controls do not, are not required to be updated at this time. We'll still be able to use the chiller and the heating without replacing the controls. The existing controls have a couple of years, several years possibly, left in their life, so we removed it from the project and can hopefully budget a little bit better and get that worked into future budgets rather than including it with this project. We have a pre-bid meeting tomorrow at 11:00 a.m., so we'll see the full interest of contractors tomorrow. I'll say we have several plans out already. The bids are also due on January 23rd at 11:00 a.m. With this project, we have it that the new equipment needs to be operational by May 1 and then fully complete by June 15th. They can get the new unit in, up and running, and then that gives them another 45 days to remove the old stuff, clean things up. Hopefully, it doesn't get too warm before May 1. But that's, I thought that's about as close as we can get and still give the contractor enough time. And then due to the nature of the work, we only have, we'll have a one-year warranty on this. And that is all I have.
Questions, council?
Was this included in the bond that we issued?
No.
This separate item?
That was the boiler. We are going to have to decide at some point how we're going to pay for this, whether we borrow for it or use existing capital that we have on hand.
So we have the money on hand?
We do, well, we do, yes.
It's not the $4 million, though?
No.
All right.
No additional questions for Melanie? Okay, so at this time, I'll open the public hearing for public comment. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and then we'll go to the action item, which is to approve this proposal.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy. Any other discussion?
One thing I'd like to mention is the library should remain open during this project. The work will be happening in the basement and outside. If there would be any, say, electrical shutdown to make any connections, we'd try and do it outside hours, otherwise we will give full notice that it might be shut down for a little bit in the morning or something like that, but we're not expecting any closure to the library.
Great, thank you. So it had been moved and seconded to approve this proposal for the library chiller replacement project. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Okay, that has been approved unanimously. The next action item is consideration to set public hearing on the proposed annexation of 2094, 2096, and parcel B, Libertyville Road. This has to do with the childcare center and setting that public hearing for Monday, January 27th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m.
Motion to approve.
Oh, it's second.
Motion by Anderson, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, same sign.
This will be owned by a tax-free entity, right?
Yes.
Okay, that was approved unanimously. Next, consideration to set a public hearing for the proposed comprehensive plan of Monday, January 27th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. My understanding, this was approved...
By planning and zoning.
By planning and zoning. Does the council feel that they have met as a group well enough to go over any thing that you remitted over the last couple of months?
Can we receive it?
Receive it ahead of time to review?
Yeah.
By email?
Yep.
Thank you.
Doug?
Oh, I didn't quite hear what Katie said.
Can we get it through email to review ahead of time?
Well, let's see, the last one, I got a link back in December or November.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it had some changes in it, but I thought we should at least meet once face-to-face and talk about the content before we approve it.
Okay.
Well, we'll be doing that next meeting, right? Because it'll come to us for adoption.
Well, right, but I meant like, have a work session just for that.
You and your work sessions. Well, next Monday's President's Day, or MLK Day, so we can't meet then.
Well, we can discuss it, but, I mean, I think having the public hearing would be good. I think it'd be nice if we were to publish the policy and action items as they stand now in the paper, so people can look at them and then come in and make comments, because I know there's at least one group that contacted me that wanted to make a change if it was possible. That was the Sierra Club. I don't know what the details of the change is that they wanted to recommend, but I think we should hear them out before we make a final approval.
So do you want to have maybe a special meeting between now and then, say, like at 5:15 for...
On a Monday?
If they're coming to the, if they come to the public hearing, they can make comment at the public hearing on the comprehensive plan. We don't have to have a special meeting for that.
I realize that, but I'm just suggesting maybe the council has more discussion, that they want to take a little more time before the public hearing.
Well, if we're going to have discussion about it, we probably should do it after the public hearing, so we can talk about the suggestions that were made at the public hearing.
I'm confused. You mean before the 27th?
No, after the 27th.
After the 27th.
If the public comes on the 27th and wants to make suggestions for change, then we should meet afterwards and discuss some suggestions and decide whether we want to incorporate or not.
Okay. So you just want to wait? We'll have a public hearing on the 27th about it. We don't necessarily have to pass it then if we don't want to.
Right.
Okay?
It'd be great if we could get a copy before the 27th.
Right, okay.
All right, I'll move to set the public hearing for next January 27th.
Okay, great. Okay, been moved by Hallie, second by Flornoy, to have the public hearing on Monday, January 27th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. for the comprehensive plan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried unanimously. Consideration of extraterritorial subdivision plat of Wild West Hills. And if Melanie will come back up. Again, my understanding, this has been approved by planning and zoning.
Yes, yes. It is a unique subdivision name to Jefferson County, so that we are able to use that name. Yes, that this subdivision has been approved by planning and zoning. It's within two miles, but outside the city limits. It's considered a major subdivision, which is why it's going through planning and zoning and then coming, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then coming to you. The seven-lot subdivision will be served by the city water. The developers have agreed to a minimum 3-inch water line, but during the planning and zone meeting, planning and zoning meeting, they said they'd likely increase to a 6-inch water line for future fire protection. The sewer, sanitary sewer, will be done through individual septic tanks, and the developer has agreed to a 26-foot wide road surface within the subdivision. Beyond that, there's really not a lot of it that is within the city's jurisdiction. All of the lots meet our minimum lot size, as well as the minimum frontage, so staff would agree with planning and zoning's recommendation to approve it.
The 26-foot width is standard?
Mm-hmm. If this was a street that was going to be maintained by the city, we would require it to be a paved surface, but if they were to do a gravel surface, we still want the 26-foot wide for emergency vehicles.
That street doesn't access all the lots, though, does it? Or does it?
These two.
You're correct. It does not access all of the lots. Lots 5 and 6 will be accessing through an existing driveway off of 32nd. During the meeting, I expressed my concern for the place that they are accessing. Driveways outside the city limits are not, we don't have a say in it, so I simply just told them that I think they should consider moving it back farther away from the intersection. They understood what I was saying, and they definitely intend to move the driveway for Lot 6, but Lot 5, they didn't really give an indication on whether they would change how that one's accessing.
Wow.
So is there a motion to approve this development?
If there were to be any access concerns for emergency vehicles, fire, ambulance, any of that, and they were not to be able to access those two lots that aren't off the road, does that fall on us if we approve the subdivision?
It's actually a John question, but I would think not.
Mr. Morrissey?
Can you come up, John? Your question, but just a minute.
Say, we don't want to approve something that our firefighters can't get to.
Do, uh...
This is really the board of supervisors' approval, isn't it? We're just saying we don't object to it.
Correct.
So it's not going to be on us, I guess, basically, with your question.
Okay.
I presume Fire Safety has already looked at it to evaluate, was acceptable?
The driveway's not in an ideal location, but it's still accessible.
Move to approve.
Second.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Okay, so moved by Hallie, second by Flornoy. I think I'm going to have you call the roll on this one, Rebecca.
Okay. Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, approved unanimously. Thank you. Next, we'll ask Holly Burke to come up. We're going to talk about authorization to submit a grant application to Iowa Department of Economic Development for federal funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Holly, can you tell us your name and where you're from and how you relate to all this?
Yes, so Holly Burke, and I am a regional planner at Area 15 Regional Planning Commission. So we assist as a council of government in a six-county area, including all the cities in Jefferson County. So we were approached, normally if there's a community development block grant, application for a municipality in our region, we assist with that as we work closely with IEDA, Iowa Economic Development Authority. I always have to stop with my acronyms, the Iowa Economic Development Authority on these types of grants. So I, tonight, we have a public hearing for a proposed Fairfield childcare facility project, so I will read this very lengthy list of required things that I have to read aloud, and then pause for a second, and then we'll...
Holly, before you start, do we have to open the public hearing before you start or after?
We will open it before. So, yes, so...
Okay, so we need to open the public hearing now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. So the public hearing is now open.
Open.
So, yeah, so I'll read this, and then I'll pause for a second, and then the second part of it is a community development housing needs assessment, so don't close it too early. We have a second part. is to alleviate the critical childcare shortage in Jefferson County. The need was identified through a Jefferson County childcare market analysis conducted by First Children's Finance in 2018. According to May 2018 Iowa Department of Human Services data, there are 533 spaces within DHS licensed childcare centers and registered childcare development homes in Jefferson County, which is down from 570 spaces in 2017. In total, Jefferson County has lost 61% of its childcare providers since 2011. The market analysis showed a need for 938 childcare spaces to currently meet the demand for parents in the county, which is a deficit of 43%. So definitely a need there. How the project, how the proposed activities will be funded and the source of funds. The total cost of the project is estimated at $2,816,000, and I should say for this application where focus on construction costs, so that might not be, Josh has, you know, final numbers for, if there were something else. So, but for the purpose of this application, we're looking at the construction costs. Funding for the project will include a proposed $600,000 from the Iowa Community Development Block Grant Program, the purpose of our hearing tonight. The local portion of the project is then anticipated to be $2,216,000, and will be paid through a USDA rural development loan through Jefferson County Kids Incorporated. Date the CDBG application will be submitted was on or before January 17th, 2020, so we're at the wire this evening. I was just about at the wire. The requested amount of federal funds includes a request of $600,000 from the Iowa Community Development Block Grant Program through Iowa Economic Development Authority. Estimated portion of federal funds that will benefit low and moderate income persons, which is a requirement of this grant, is 52.43%, and that's based on the 2011 to 2015 American Community Survey data for the city of Fairfield. Where the proposed activities will be conducted, the proposed activity will take place in the city of Fairfield, approximately, on approximately four acres adjacent to the west side of the Jefferson County Health Center located off Liberty Road. The proposed, the property is currently owned by the Jefferson County Health Center and is being donated to Jefferson County Kids Incorporated for this project. Plans, we always have to review plans to minimize displacement of persons or businesses resulting in funded activities. There won't be any planned persons or businesses displaced as part of this project. Plans to assist persons actually displaced, it's on there twice, no person or businesses will be displaced as part of the project. If there were to be someone displaced, the city would follow its residential anti-deplacement, anti-displacement and residential relocation plan, which is part of the grant requirements, would be a policy that's adopted. And the nature of the proposed activities, Jefferson County Kids, Inc., will be constructing a new childcare facility in Fairfield. The facility will be 14,000 square feet with 12 classrooms. Floor plan designs meet Iowa Department of Human Services requirements. The childcare facility will serve children from infants to 12 years old. Services will include before and after care for children enrolled in the statewide voluntary preschool program for four-year-olds, part-time before and after school care for children enrolled in elementary school, and full-time care for school-aged children where there is no school. The facility will serve up to 185 children, which is, which addresses approximately 45% of the childcare deficit in Jefferson County. Any questions on that part?
Questions from the public?
Then we'll move on to the next one.
All right, okay.
So as part of this public hearing, there needs to be a discussion of community development and housing needs in your community. This is a requirement of the grant application that has to be updated every five years, essentially just saying that you're aware of the needs, both in terms of community development and housing needs. And there is a paper put on your desk there. What I did was take the one from five years ago, remove the projects. It's always nice to have a starting point in case. But remove the projects that had been completed, updated some language for things that I know are in process, like wastewater improvements and things. So I thought, yeah, pretty much it looked in line with what you guys are doing. I know your comprehensive plan will be adopted soon. This doesn't hold you to any projects on this list. It just means they want to see as part of the grant application that you're thinking of these types of needs in your community. And so if there, I'll read them aloud quickly and efficiently if possible. So, major housing and community development needs for low to moderate income persons, need for additional housing for LMI households, including single and multifamily, need for childcare facilities, downtown revitalization, facade improvements and streetscaping, upgrade existing housing stock, water system distribution improvements, street infrastructure improvements, and wastewater. I noted that there was rehabilitation underway as now. Other community development and housing needs, attraction to new local businesses, economic development of the area, need for building zoning code enforcement, and diversification of industrial base is always something to strive for. Plan or potential activities to address housing and community needs, completion of housing needs assessment, implement the new comprehensive plan as it becomes available, develop, update, implement any new city zoning codes, apply for funding to improve water sanitary sewer, storm sewer systems, implement tax and other incentives for housing and commercial development, cooperate with local, area, state, federal service supervisors to access technical and financial assistance to help out with those projects, utilize special agencies programs to provide essential public facilities and services, utilize bonds to provide public facilities and services, engage in public-private partnerships or service agreements to provide or improve services.
Any questions from the public?
So, essentially, if there, it doesn't need to be a vote on that part, but if that, this essentially is a public input session for anything you believe should be changed on that list or amended before I submit it with the application. But again, it doesn't hold to any, you know, projects that you have to do.
Okay, questions from council?
So this study is now five years old, you're telling me?
That was, I, I created this from the last one, which was approximately five years old, and tried to update it and talk to Aaron a little bit about it.
But my only point is that if we were to apply for another grant next year, the year after, this would be out of date. We wouldn't be able to use this information.
Uh, there, it's valid for about five years after that, unless you want to hold one for the sake of holding one in advance, or for, but yeah, it's, uh-
Would it expire or not?
They're, they're valid for five years from tonight. So grant applications the next five years.
No, no, this study, the housing study?
Yes.
It's five years old already?
Yeah, 2014, the last one.
So probably you need to do another one if we want to stay current, so it's available if we want to apply for another grant from the CDBG.
It's one of the things I would, I've started, I would like to talk to Aaron and talk to Mayor, Mayor Boyer about is updating that with Holly's office, Area 15. We've got a really nice basis. It'd be nice if they have opportunity, maybe at a lower cost, to update that study.
Hey, Josh, why don't you come up? So-
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. I was thinking of the needs assessment in terms of this document, not the actual housing needs assessment. My apologies for-
No, it's okay.
For misunderstanding there. But, yeah, so that's why I knew it was about five years old, so that's why I put it in a planned or potential activity, was that essentially it's pretty much always on your planned or potential activity because it always evolves. So I left it on there like that.
Okay, so I guess I'm going to, we're ready to close the public hearing, right?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? All right. Okay. So you're ready for the action item then?
Yes.
To authorization to submit the grant to the Iowa Department of Economic Development for federal funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, it's been, motion by Anderson and second by Gandy to approve this application. All those in favor say aye?
We discuss it.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, what?
Can we discuss it?
Let's discuss it, yes, I forgot that.
So what's the timeline on this application? When will it be looked at and approved or not approved?
So we believe we should hear back probably mid-March. This is a special grant cycle that opened up, so I don't know what their timeline is.
A couple of months?
But usually it's about two months.
And then, a lot of times these grants have, has have a time horizon when they have to be spent by a certain date. Is there such a date for this grant?
Yeah, when, if, if it's approved, there's normally a three-year contract period for these grants, which the project as defined would be well within, within that.
So we have three years to raise the $2 million? And get the projects, and spend this money, right?
And the local, the local funds is, there's the loan for USDA, so essentially the plan is, or there's that USDA loan application that's going in, so it's funded on the front to then, to then be funded on the back end by those fundraisers. That way it can proceed quickly. Does that sound?
Explain that again?
Yeah, Josh, you want to expound on that a little bit?
So on, we'll talk about the USDA community facilities loan here on, in an upcoming agenda item, but initially, the project will be funded by a USDA rural development community facilities loan. They have a special loan program for community facilities. Childcare centers are an eligible project. We do plan to pursue that loan. It is up to 40-year terms with low interest rate. Right now, I think it's hovering around 3%. So that would mobilize the project, and that loan, pursuing that loan will help us with this application that Holly just talked to you about. But we will be launching a capital campaign with more details to come very, very soon. I wish it was sooner, to be able to share that, but-
Okay, so this grant gets approved, and the loan gets approved, you're ready to go?
We're ready to go. I do, we do want this project to be sustainable, so the Jefferson County Kids Board of Directors, I think, would like to be very safe and do as much fundraising as possible before we mobilize the project. We want this to be a long-term sustainable project for the community.
Okay, additional questions? So it has been moved and seconded to authorize the submission of this grant? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, it's approved unanimously. The next part of this is consideration of the sub-recipient agreement with Jefferson County Kids, Inc. for the federally funded project. So can you explain that portion of that?
I promise this is my, my last. So as part of the grant application, they want to see that there is an agreement between the city, because the city has to be the recipient on any of these community development block grant funds, but obviously it's for a project that's not city-owned. So this is essentially a pretty standard verbiage from Iowa Economic Development Authority for showing that Jefferson County Kids, Inc. would be a sub-recipient from the grant being applied to by the city. And I know there, on your desk is a copy of the contract. There was just a couple of language changes discussed between Jefferson County Kids, Inc. attorney and the city attorney, which I believe everything was okay with both groups. But we wanted to highlight just a couple word changes so that there wasn't anything, anything misleading on that.
As I just mentioned on your desk, the comp you have in front of you with the yellow highlighted areas, those are the difference, the differences compared to what you received in your council packet. Those are recommendations from the Jefferson County Kids Board, Legal Counsel, Lucas Helling, this afternoon. I did take those proposed changes to City Attorney John Morrissey, to have him consider it on behalf of the city, trying to help out Aaron and Rebecca, as they were probably busy on this council day. John, do you have any comments on those proposed changes?
I didn't get very excited about the changes. What it amounts to is sub-recipient agreements. You have it every once in a while, and somebody comes to you and asks you to be a pass-through sponsor for a project, and that's what this is about. And in passing through your sub-recipient agreement with the highlighted changes on the latest version, provides essentially everything that you sometimes get when you have a contract and they want to see all your city policies. And this covers clean air, clean water, Davis Bacon labor standards, anti-discrimination as far as minorities, all the way through the different spectrum of racial involvement and so forth. And it basically just says that the sub-recipient is going to essentially do the same thing that the cities require to do as far as state and federal funding. And other than that, the two or three places where there are highlights, Josh and I looked at them, except for a couple of changes as far as routing, that amounted to still the same meaning. One of them was at the back end of it, as far as if CBDB funds are terminated, obviously the local government and the sub-recipient can pull out. Vice versa, if we fail to comply with all our policy promises, they can pull out, but that hasn't been our experience over these kinds of things, so no reason to fear, I guess. Other than that, anybody have any questions about this? Josh and I did look at it pretty thoroughly, and as he said, he's had his council looking over too as far as the kids side of this and their nonprofit corporation.
Just that last section that was amended, basically it used to say due to reduction or termination of the CBDB funding. Now it's just termination, so, so keep us on the hook if we don't get full funding? Is that essentially what that is?
It, it does, but the whole idea is to get as much funding as we can.
Yep.
And there's no promise that we'll get 100% of what we request, but our path is to go get as much as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, Michael. Any other questions? It's now taken, motion and entertainment to move this agreement.
So moved?
Moved by Hallie?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those, same sign? Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, and we'll be putting the application in by Friday, and we'll be in communication when we hear back.
Thank you, Holly.
Did we get through all those action items? We're ready for a letter of community support, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yep. Okay, so consideration of a letter of community support for the essential community projects financed by USDA rural development Iowa.
So council, this is a little bit what we just spoke about. We are, we would like to pursue using USDA's community facilities loan program, and what's in front of you is a general letter of support saying that childcare is a need based on your knowledge and the research we've done, and that this is a service that the city is not in a position or would not typically provide as a municipality. So it's a basic letter of support, and I believe it almost, almost reads verbatim, verbatim, but, so that's, this is a general letter of support that will allow us to submit the pre-application, which we would like to do tomorrow.
I'd move that we approve this, writing this letter of support-
Second.
-to Jefferson County Kids.
It's been, it's been moved by Flornoy and second by Anderson, I believe. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, it's passed unanimously.
Thank you, council, for your support, and we'll continue to work hard to make sure that project continues to move forward as fast as it can.
Thanks, Josh. You might want to stay up here, Josh. Next action is consideration of resolution fixing the date for a public hearing on the proposal to enter into a development agreement with Culp Fairfield Iowa Partners LLC and Traffix Devices, Inc., and providing for publication of notice thereof, and the date would be Monday, January 27th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. So if you have any detail or errand that you want to talk about?
Basically, what, what we're doing here is, Traffix is expanding their, their business. They have got some financing incentives through IEDA. Part of that is the city would have to provide a match of some sort to, for them to get some jobs, credits, and other financing through IEDA. So what we did is we, we did a tax rebate on the new facility that they're putting up, which is pretty much up, but the rebate is on the taxes that the new building would create.
For how long?
You mean abatement, right?
No rebate.
Well, they've already paid the-
They will pay taxes on it, and then we will rebate them back. If, it's already in a TIF area, and the reason why we, if, if they, we can't give them any money if they're not paying any taxes, so we have to do a rebate and not an abatement. The actual IEDA is writ, agreement is actually written- The actual IEDA is writ, agreement is actually written as an abatement. We have to get that figured, fixed with IEDA, because we can't give them any money if we don't have any money to rebate them back.
Because normally, we do the matching through abatement process.
Through a rebate.
So it doesn't cost, well, or abatement process.
We, we don't normally do abatements, we usually do rebates.
You mean, other way around?
Rebates, not abatements.
Under a TIF, we don't do abatements.
I'll clarify this quickly. So typically, you do do the local match through an abatement? You have a policy, a three-year?
Rebate.
Well, if it's not a TIF district?
In a non-TIF district, it's usually abatement, I believe. You have a three-year, 100% commercial tax payment.
Just like a property improvement, we did the abatement tonight for those taxes for the property improvement.
If it's not a TIF district.
If it's not a TIF district, that's where we've done it before, but this is a TIF district, so it's different.
Yes.
And we would, I think Erin and the staff would prefer probably a, an abatement, but the law says that your urban renewal plan, it says you have to do a rebate in this situation, which is essentially the same thing, just a little bit more work for your staff to administer that rebate.
So it's just flow-through money, they'll give it to us, and we'll give it back to them?
Is this a one-time rebate?
They don't get all of it back, but yeah. So, say that again.
Is it a one-time rebate?
It's a, over three years.
Over three years, okay.
And this fulfills the, as Erin mentioned, the requirements for the local match, for the high-quality job.
But should we point out that if it weren't in a TIF district, they would already get an abatement for three, is it three years?
Three years, 100%.
So it's a moot point, really, just to...
Just because they already TIF'd it, we have to do this?
So it's a push.
I don't know if that's a verb. It's made it a verb.
Just to be clear to the public, so they don't think we're giving money away that we wouldn't normally give away.
This would be available to any other company expanding.
Sure.
And making commitments to expand.
So we're just setting a public hearing, right?
Right.
Motion to approve.
Suck it.
Okay. Motion from Anderson, second by Flornoy. Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, motion to set a public hearing for Traffic's Devices and their rebate for Monday, January 27. Okay, so, now we're going to talk about the ordinance amending downtown parking restrictions. So before I open the public hearing, Michael, you want to talk about that?
Sure. So, my 10 years on the council, this has come to us three times. Third time's a charm, we finally decided that enough is enough, we're going to join the rest of the communities in southeast Iowa who allow overnight parking downtown. Current law is, there's no parking in our business district from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM, and we have a growing number of tenants, people who live in the second floor downtown, who, that's just becoming more difficult for them to park outside the business district and then walk to their residence. So this came to the Public Safety and Transportation Committee last year, and we, three of us, made the motion to bring this to the council. The only exception for overnight parking, two. One, if there's going to be street cleaning, and two, if snow removal. So, the simplest way to do this would be to have flip signs similar to the signs that are on Broadway Avenue, when that becomes one-way for street, for the buses, where when it's flipped up, it's nothing, but when you pull the pin, down comes no parking. So, Street Department, if they're going to be street cleaning the next day, pull the pins that day, and then it says no overnight parking with the times, and then that's prohibited. And we can do the same thing when we're expecting snow. I think I talked to John Morrissey about this last week, that seems to be the simplest way, then we're in control, and then there's an actual sign downtown that we can point to, instead of trying to get the word out through some sort of communication channel that there's snow coming. If the signs flip down and it says no parking, there's no overnight parking. Pretty straightforward. So this amendment basically just takes the two to 6:00 AM out of our code, and then it references these periods of weather emergency, but it's non-specific about how we handle that. So that's kind of a logistic thing that we can work with Daryl Bysgard to figure out.
This is only for residents and business owners?
No, it's just for anyone parking downtown.
Anybody. So you don't need a tag for residents?
No tags necessary. And then the same parking laws for no, you can't park 24 hours in the same spot, apply to this.
Any other questions, counsel, for Michael?
How many, how many flip-down signs are you talking about?
Well, we just basically be taking down the signs that say no parking 2 to 6:00 AM and replacing them with the flip-down, and putting it in a way where the Street Department can get to it relatively easily. Don't want them to have to bring out their bucket trucks every time.
Melanie, did you just say five?
One per block would be five to seven in the downtown?
Yeah, even if we did two per block, you know, 10 to 14.
Okay, so at this time, I'll open the public hearing, are there any comments from the public? Paul?
I'd like to thank the council for, for doing this. I own 13 units on, on the square. This is going to be terrifically useful for my tenants, particularly my residential tenants, who've been asking for this all along, and in some cases, just parking there and, and accepting tickets because they thought it was worth it. But I think it will make more of a presence on the square late at night of cars, which makes the appearance of maybe more people being around, even if they happen to be asleep. But thank you all for considering this, it's very, very helpful.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else?
So I have spoken to a few of our retailers downtown. I think most of them understand the value of having people living downtown. They do, and I don't know that this would be a rule change, but would appreciate very much if those tenants upstairs would park on the park side of the street rather than directly in front of their businesses. And I don't know if you can address that with an ordinance or not, but it would be appreciated politely requested. Thank you.
Thank you, Darian.
Could I make one more point, please?
Sure, go ahead.
It, it might be useful to have a handout to ask for that kind of cooperation of the gentleman just mentioned, that could be placed, because everywhere, the apartments have to be upstairs anyway. The, I, I, for instance, would post it in the stairwell, or I'd hand it to my tenants personally, and, and ask them, please, to cooperate with this, and, and remind them about the snow, so that they can cooperate, because now that you've given them something, they should give back something and cooperate with those signs.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Mayor, can I ask Daryl something?
Yes.
Daryl, I'm going to call you to the floor. Are flip-down signs going to be the best use of your guys' time, or would sandwich boards be more useful? I'm just, I'm comparing to other towns I've worked in around here, and I just want to make sure that we're doing what's in the best interest of the guys that are going to be out there flipping signs. Do you have a preference?
I'm actually not sure what would be the best way.
Okay.
I know flip-down signs can be flipped down by anybody.
Okay.
And things like that. So if that happens, I mean, we have to, I'm not sure how the identification would be. I agree, there should be parking downtown, but I'm not sure how that can go, because if we do, like a snow event or something like that, we have to have a notification, say, okay, we put down the signs and say, oh, say, within 24 hours, you have to have your cars off there, within 12 hours, you have to have your, you know, just because you flip it down, doesn't mean they're going to move their cars. And they might be gone. I, I mean, you know, they might be out of town. How many are, you will allow? I don't know. I don't know what the best way is to notify people, but I think there's going to be some problems with this, and as would be with anything that you have new. But, I, I don't know, and we'll do the best we can with those, and, because I know with the bus signs that they have, sometimes those beacons get left on, sometimes the signs don't get put back up, however well-intentioned they might be, I'm not sure that's the best way to do it. I don't know how the best way to do it.
Do you want me to call around, find out with some of the cities? Because I know Mount Pleasant, Washington, and Alaskalusa allow downtown parking. I can call their Daryl equivalents and find out what they do.
Call their Daryl. I know Washington uses sandwich boards.
I think what, what the easiest thing for us to do would up, to use our social media page and our website and the radio media outlets to make notification along. If, if we go with the signs, I think that would be fine, along with webpage, Facebook, and radio. I, I'm a little bit more towards the, I think if we make the notification through those three avenues, that's plenty, and it's up to the citizens to make those responsive, be responsible citizens and take care of it at that point. But if the council wants to go with signs, we can put up the signs and do the drop-down signs along with the notifications on, on social media and through the media.
One of my things is too, if, if we're going to take parking off for like, Holy Snow Way, that's what you're talking about, right? Because usually when we plow anymore, we plow the center of the streets and go out, and if there's a big snow, then we're going to need to pick it up, because a lot of times it's not that big a snow. But if it gets to be a big snow, I would say, again, I think we're going to have problems with the flip-down signs, if we have something that either Mel or myself or somebody can say, okay, we have a snow ordinance. We have a three-inch snow. Don't park there. We can put that ordinance out on, and, again, I'm going to put the common sense. If you have a three-inch snow, yeah, if it causes three-inch snow and you don't get it, yeah, who's going to go out and measure it? I don't know. But I just see a lot of problem with flip-down signs.
Well, the idea with the signs was that it removes excuses. I didn't, I didn't see the notification in the paper, I didn't hear it on the radio. I mean, we get this every time, we do RagBri, we tow somebody's car, and they said, they had no idea that it was coming, when we've talked about it for six months in advance. So, you know, if there's a sign and it just says no parking, it's pretty straightforward, it's no parking.
Well, and I'll go a step further. I mean, we haven't discussed all this yet, this is kind of new, what I'm hearing here. So maybe a sign that says, if there's going to be a three-inch snow, don't park there. That sign is up all the time.
Yep.
Nothing flipped up, down, or whatever. We're just replacing those signs that we had from no parking 2 AM to 6 AM.
What about street cleaning? How will people know not to park when you guys want to do your early morning street sweeping?
We don't do that as much as we used to and things like that, so that can probably be maybe a day set by, you know, a date. We can say, okay, this certain date on, on the month or something like that, we can do that, and then they can have a set date at that time. I'm just trying to say confusion with up and downs.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think we need to talk about some of these things again before we actually put this into place.
We got two more readings.
Yeah, we got two more readings.
We got time.
I would say, we can take it back to committee and have changes ready for the next meeting.
Yep.
What's the alternative signs, just have the ordinance, no signage?
Yep, we could do that.
Is that the only alternative?
That's essentially the other alternative.
Okay, now, now I've forgotten, did I already close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
That's when I spoke.
Okay, yes, right. So, so I guess we're going to consider passing this through the first reading.
I'll make the motion to move it from first to second.
Okay, so it's been moved.
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy, I believe, or Tohill, okay. To approve this from the first reading to the second reading, and in the interim, the committee will meet and make any proposed changes. Any more discussion? If not, please call the roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Alrighty, so that's passed unanimously. Okay, we're going to go to the mayor's report. So I do have some appointments, and reappointments. The Airport Commission, Sally Hayes and James Masterson, those, those two are currently, were current on the Airport Commission, and we will reappoint them, I'd like to. Fairfield Arts and Convention Center, we have two new people, Sue Huckey and Roberta Sloat. Beautification, Paula Armstrong and Sue Gale is reappointments. Carnegie Museum, Lawrence Iyer, he's new. And a reappointment for Park and Recreation Advisory Board, Roland Hecker. So that's, again, reappointment. So I would...
Would we approve appointments recommended by the mayor to the various committees?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy, to approve these appointments. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those same, all those opposed, same sign? Okay, that's approved unanimously. I would like to mention that I would appreciate if the committees meet with their, their, their new committee structure as soon as possible, and then even within the next couple weeks, to go over any kind of unfinished business from, from last year, if there is anything, and also talk about some goals that you might want to accomplish in 2019. Also, I am asking, and then next week, or excuse me, the next meeting, we can set maybe some dates for some Saturday work sessions. Also, I would ask that you be disciplined about your minutes, that they be written up, and then they will be part of the board packet the next meeting, and they will be approved at that time. So I'm asking for committee minutes, again, to be written up and given to Rebecca, so they can be included in your board packet at the next meeting. I wanted to also mention, the Fairfield Forum, what is 5G, is going to be held on Saturday at 1:00. At the Fairfield Arts and Convention Center, we will be in the expo hall. The forum is, is for educational purposes only. It's, it's not a debate, or it's not a rally for one side or the other, it's to educate our citizens on this particular topic. Kathy did mention that Mr. Timothy Scheckley is going to be here. Personally, I'm anxious to hear what he has to say. We also, I have also invited a gentleman named Mr. Troy Garrison, somebody I've known for many years, he's an IT network specialist. He's going to give information, risks and benefits of 5G as it relates to privacy and security. So we'll hear a little bit about health risks, we'll hear a little bit about benefits of 5G. We know that some people in our community want it, some people don't, so we're just going to try to educate ourselves on what it is and what it means, and hopefully give some pointers, particularly, you know, in the privacy and security area, how you can help protect yourself, and there'll be time, you know, they, they will have their time for speaking, and there'll be time for questions at the end. So we anticipate it'll be a couple hours long. Jason's able to come and tape it, and we'll have it on public access, so if you're not there, the community can watch it also. All right, I think that's all that I have, and...
I have one note, but if you have something else before that.
Yes, no, go ahead.
I am, along with the CD quote that we got, we're also looking at doing other things with our fund balances. I'm going to be meeting with our depository bank tomorrow, see what we can do to continue to incur interest on the fund balances that we have with other things that are a little bit more liquid rather than locked into a CD. So that'll be something to look forward, to have a discussion with as we go.
So Piper Jaffrey didn't recommend laddering that investment, just...
With the CD, he just said, go ahead and put it in.
Four million for 12 months, at the beginning?
Yep, one, yep, and then, then I'm...
Yearly, we have to look at it again?
Yep, each year we'll do that, and then we'll probably have another chunk of money that's, look, it looks like mutual, mutual fund, or with I paid on a 30-day CD rate, something like that.
Alrighty. City Attorney Report, John, do you have anything?
Counsel, no.
Okay, great. Any other committee and board reports? Any other administrator or department reports? Erin, do you have anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move adjourned.
It's been moved by Tohill and seconded by Flornoy, I'm not sure who was first. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Alright, passed unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Meeting adjourned.